I'd like to call the April 4, 2013 Reno City Planning Commission to order. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two, roll call.
Jason Wusley.
Here.
Doug Kaufman.
Here.
Kimberly Locke is absent. Paulo Levis.
Here.
Dagny Stapleton.
Here.
Kevin Weiskie.
Here.
Dennis Romeo is absent as well.
Thank you. Item number three is public comment. This item is for either general public comment or for public comment on an action item. If commenting on an action item, please place the item number on the request to speak form. Do we have any forms for?
No, we do not.
Thank you very much.
Marilyn Craig, Deputy City Attorney.
Yes, Marilyn.
I have a message for the Planning Commission and members of the audience. Dennis Romeo, Chair and Planning Commissioner, has asked me to give you this information, and that is that he has taken a job as a radio talk show host, and he will be submitting his resignation sometime in the near future. I anticipate that he will be seeing you at your next Planning Commission meeting to say goodbye and hello and goodbye, and to thank you for all of the hard work that you have done. So, he asked me to deliver that message to you.
Thank you very much. Closing public comment. Item number four, City Council Liaison Reports. Claudia is not here tonight, so I'm guessing we don't have any. Okay, moving on to item number five, the presentation of the 2012 International Code Council Amendments. Staff wishes to postpone this to further notice. All right. Moving on to item number six, Presentation of the 2035 Regional Transportation Plan. Amy? Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm Amy Cummings with the Regional Transportation Commission. I'm very happy to be back. I believe it was over the summer, but there is here previously.
Amy, can you turn your mic, please? Thank you.
No? Yes? Oh, thank you. So, Amy Cummings with Regional Transportation Commission, and I'm going to be giving you an overview of the 2035 Draft Regional Transportation Plan. This is now during our public comment period. The draft is on the RTC website, so we encourage everyone to go and take a look at that, and send us comments in through the website, or call me, and I have my contact information up at the end of the PowerPoint. The last time we were here to talk about the RTP, we were asking for suggestions for projects to consider, and we took all of those ideas, continued that through the analysis, and had a workshop in October to get prioritization feedback from the community on what people felt were some of their top priorities, and we developed cost estimates. And the results of all this analysis and outreach are in the draft. This was based really on a lot of community involvement events, and this slide just shows you some of the summaries. We had our workshops and the roundtable discussions to focus on specific issues. The four programmatic elements of the RTP that you'll see are annual funding for the ADA Transition Plan, so that's upgrading sidewalks and curb ramps and crosswalks and that sort of thing, implementing our Bicycle Pedestrian Master Plan, continuing with our Pavement Preservation Program to keep roads in good condition, that's the Slurry Seal Rehab that you see during the summers, and our ITS Program, which is upgrading traffic signals in accordance with our ITS Master Plan. We also have a series of livability projects, and you're familiar with many of these, the Fourth Street Prater Way improvements, that are focused not on adding auto capacity, but on adding bicycle connectivity and wider sidewalks and transit connectivity. The same with the Audi Boulevard Wells Avenue project and the Mill Street Terminal Way project. We also have the major regional connectivity projects, such as Southeast Connector, which has just gotten under construction, and of course, continuous improvements on I-80 and US-395 to make sure that regional mobility is continuing over the next 20 years. We have a fiscally constrained, oh, actually, everything in the plan is fiscally constrained. We have to demonstrate our ability to pay for all of these projects over the next 20 years. Transit is our biggest challenge, so we've identified that what we can reasonably, on our current funding levels, continue to provide is the service that we have today. We do have funding to extend the rapid up to UNR, and that's something, we've just started the Virginia Street Corridor Study, and hope to come back and speak to you about that at a future time, but that's something in the near term, and we're also looking at extending service to the Galleria in Sparks on Pyramid, and that's something that our Board is still considering. In terms of construction, of course, there'll be new rapid stations on Fourth Prater and on Virginia Street getting up to UNR. We also have some needs for facility upgrades so that we can accommodate more alternative fuel vehicles. And this shows you the vision map. What we heard at a lot of our outreach events is that people want significantly greater investments in public transportation and to expand those services far beyond what we can currently afford with our current revenue streams. So, this shows you that on Virginia Street, there's a desire to extend that south to the summit, as well as east on Fourth, Prater to Legends. So, we want to identify that, and that is consistent with the TOD districts that I know you've been discussing and working on. There was also an interest in having us provide more transit service to some of the outlying suburban neighborhoods, so we're looking at different service mechanisms that could do this, maybe a van pool or some other type of transit service, because it's, you can see the darker lines are what we provide currently, and then the green circles to, you know, Somerset and Cold Springs and Galena are what people are asking for to improve mobility. But again, that's not something we can fund at the present, so we've identified those as the vision. This is our website, you're washortp.com, and the plan is available there. We're having our public hearing at the RTC meeting on the 19th, and I have just found out that the meeting will actually not be at 9:00 AM, but it will be, I believe, at 2:00 PM, so please check our website if you're interested in coming to that, because it's not going to be at our regular meeting time. And then the plan will go to FHWA for their concurrence. And this is my contact information, and again, feel free to contact us through the website or email with any suggestions. And I do have a few copies of this. I frankly have been having a lot of people tell me they would rather look at it on the PDF on the website instead of carry one of these around, but I do have a few, and if you'd like me to send you one, I don't have enough today, I'd be happy to send those to you in the mail.
Great, thank you. Do we have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Amy, tell me exactly what we're looking at as far as pedestrian. And the reason I'm asking the question is, there seems to be a lot of pedestrians being hit by vehicles, so kind of just give us an overview of what that's going to look like.
Absolutely. Thank you for that question. And one thing that MAP 21, which is the federal transportation legislation, requires us to do is implement performance measures, and safety performance measures are one of the things that we do have in the plan. So, we'll be tracking pedestrian and bicycle crashes and fatalities and injury crashes in the region, and tracking what transportation projects and what impacts they're having on those safety rates. And that's the annual reporting that we're going to be doing. A lot of the projects, the livability projects that I mentioned, Fourth Street, Audi, Mill Street, there's another on Kitski, NDOT is working on, and funding for those is included here, Virginia Street as well, and I mentioned the Virginia Street Corridor Study. What we did in the ADA Transition Plan was identify a lot of the sidewalk deficiencies in our network with special focus on the regional roads and transit routes. So, this plan is recommending a million dollars a year in funding to upgrade those sidewalks through the ADA Transition Plan, so that we do have better connectivity and just safer places for people to walk, because when you do have adequate space and a little bit of separation from cars, it's more comfortable and safer for the pedestrians. So, that's one of the priorities.
I guess to narrow my question down, crosswalks. That, you know, is one of the things we're kind of concerned with, especially when different projects come before us, but how people cross, you know, an example is by UNR, now they have some flashing lights, that type of thing, you know, when people cross to let, especially in the areas that aren't as lit as well. So, are you, you know, looking at that? Is that a big issue?
That is a big issue, and we've just completed, or NDOT has just completed in coordination with us and the city, a road safety audit for Virginia Street, and they identified examples just like that from Geiger Grade all the way, you know, past North McCarran, and they identified some of those crosswalks, especially in the northern parts, where you have a bus stop and a crosswalk with not much lighting, and after dark, it's certainly a good place to install one of those flashing pedestrian cross signs. And they identified several locations on Virginia Street in particular through this study. And we've done several studies like that with NDOT, road safety audits, that identify hazards, you know, exactly as you mentioned, and those are involved, are included in the corridor improvements that are in the plan.
So, what is a typical flashing crosswalk? What does that cost to implement?
I will have to get a cost estimate. I want to say about $20,000 off the top of my head, but I will get an estimate for that and bring it back for a future meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for me? Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number seven, Acceptance of the City of Reno Planning Progress and Priorities Report. Nathan?
Good evening, Commissioners. For the record, Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. The item before you tonight is the Annual City of Reno Planning Progress and Priorities Report, which has been updated to provide information on the specific planning activities that have occurred during the 2012 calendar year. The contents were reviewed during the Planning Commission's last workshop, and your updated goals have been included. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission accept the report and forward it on to the City Council.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions? Discussion? Motion? Yes. Commissioner Weiskie.
Thank you. I move to accept the City of Reno Planning Progress and Priorities Report as presented this evening.
Do I have a second?
Commissioner Kaufman, and I'll second that.
All right, I have a first and a second. All those in favor, seeing my saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, saying nay. Let the record show that the motion passed 5-0. Moving on to item number eight, Unfinished Business and Public Hearings. Any person who has chosen to provide his or her public comment when a public hearing is heard will need to do so, making on a request to speak form provided to the Secretary. Alternatively, you may provide your comment when item three, public comment, is heard at the beginning of the meeting. One, we have, thank you. We have Midtown District, case number TXT 12-00009, Midtown District. Jody? Come to the podium. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Jody Royal, Goodwin Housing and Neighborhood Development Administrator, for the record. So, you received a memo late today, sorry about that. Much more complicated than I anticipated, but, and do you want me to walk through the memo? That answers the questions that were asked at the last meeting, or how would you like me to proceed? I've already kind of presented, and we've had lots of discussion on the item, so.
Guys have an opinion?
Yes, I'd like to have her go through it, please.
Please go through it then, thank you.
Okay. So, there were about six items that were discussed at the last meeting that additional information was requested regarding, and I'm just going to go through those one at a time by, and they're kind of segregated by section, either through the whole district or by the residential versus the commercial section. So, the first one that is throughout the Midtown District is the building orientation, and the issue that was brought up was that buildings being required to be oriented per the proposal, which required that the front, the main interest, main access point be on the frontage of the building, which the frontage is required to be on the main street access. So, along the Virginia Street Corridor, the frontage would be towards Virginia, even if that were the back of the building, and so the main entrance needs to be that way. The conversation that we had was related to that requirement may stifle creative and consistent development that is going on at this point by requiring more block types of development. The reason for building orientation in the past, as the memo kind of explains, is that it provides the pedestrian-friendly access and movement through a community, so it's kind of going back to the main street kind of feel, so you want it at pedestrian level or human scale, and you want them to have, to be able to see in the stores, to see what kind of exists that they could go in and buy, and you want them to be able to get in to use that service or buy that item. So, we talked about it, and I've made a couple of suggestions in there, so in there are examples of different building orientations in this document. The classic one is Image 1, which truly has all the windows and the main entrance, it's right on the sidewalk right there. And then the second one is where there are windows, display windows on the front, but you enter essentially from the corners of the building that are towards the sidewalk. The Image 3 doesn't, wouldn't comply with the way the proposal is written at this point, because the access points are not towards the sidewalk or the street. However, in some plans, there is reference to following the pedestrian pathways. So, in this case, you'll see in both of these developments, there is a pathway that goes through for pedestrians to walk on through the middle of those buildings, and the entrances are off of that pathway. Do you want me to show it? Sorry, copies of copies aren't always pretty. Still not very pretty, but you can see where, so the sidewalk is actually out here, but then the pathway goes through mid-block, so they can actually get to points on the other side of the block by going past these businesses. And so, and then because it does apply to the entire district, the last image is actually of residential orientations that are, would be, in this case, they'd be applicable to this because their main entrance would be towards the street front. So, with all of that being said, to remain in compliance with the plan as a whole, because other places in the plan that require building orientation actually do not call out the main access point is through the front of the building, but that they're oriented to provide pedestrian access from the front of the building in terms of, they have to be able to get, my interpretation is, Marilyn, I'm sorry to be interpreting, that you can get to them, it's not necessarily that it has to be right off the sidewalk, but that you're enticed kind of to enter a building from this, from what you see on the sidewalk.
Mr. Chairman? Jody, can I have a question for you, Commissioner Weiskie? Does this pertain only to businesses with an address on South Virginia?
The, no, the building would be located on Virginia, so, and there are a couple of different examples, so you have the standard older buildings, which do have, there's the deli and the bicycle shop right there towards the north end of the district, and they have their door right off of the sidewalk along Virginia Street. Across the street, you have Mr. Shaw's Development.
Virginia Street Plaza.
Virginia Street Plaza, I keep wanting to call it the Commons, I'm sorry, which many of the businesses, their doors are to the parking lot, which is facing south, but there is a door to the front business on the Virginia Street face.
Okay.
So, they would have Virginia Street addresses because they're suites, I would assume, and then, but they're not all facing Virginia Street.
So, if we use that shopping center, strip shop, as an example, the only suite that would be required to have a door is the, facing Virginia is the suite on Virginia Street. All others would face their parking lot, or a walkway as it's designed, as it's shown in your copies.
Yeah, that's a pretty close replica in terms of a pathway. And the, so, one of the discussions I had related to this issue was related to developments that are less linear in organization. The one that was discussed with me is kind of in the interior is in a semicircle, I mean, the buildings are kind of oriented in a semicircle around both a drive that cuts through the block, as well as then the appropriate sidewalks and parking that go through there. And the doors are all oriented towards the parking. There is street frontage, display windows, but the entrances are not from, none of the entrances are from Virginia Street.
So, would this create, to me, when I read this, it tells me that future developments similar to the project you just described would have to put a door onto Virginia Street, not just windows for display or view?
As the proposal is currently written, that is true. Some door would have to be on Virginia Street. Other places-
But it doesn't, but if somebody were to mirror that development that is going in right now, that appears to be well thought out, well laid out, and creating a very nice walkway and drive area, now you're going to put a door on each end of it, and that, how does that make sense?
So, let me just clarify that you're saying that you don't necessarily agree that there should be a door required, or you are?
I'm saying, I'm asking, how does a door on each end make sense when the developer is trying to bring people into the middle of a group of buildings and businesses?
And that would be the argument, it doesn't.
Okay.
So.
So, this may not work for all cases, then?
Yes. And in this case, the buildings do have ways to get around each building, so it's not like you have to get to the front of the overall project to get into the project. So, there's that aspect of it, too. So, and that's why the proposal, or the considerations for changing what is in the plan are what they are. So, you could leave it as it is and require the entrances to be off of Virginia Street, or you could change it to the primary buildings need to be ax, they need to be oriented towards the front yard, which is the same as the front setback or the street in this case, with access for, from clear pedestrian pathways or through an entrance on the facade. So, it gets, I believe that gets to kind of the idea that it's not necessarily a door that provides the access. And then the second consideration was, you could remove the proposed language about the door and allow there to be an administrative interpretation in terms of how that is implemented. So, if something came through, say it's a site plan review, that would say, it's not a door that's the entrance, but it is pedestrian-oriented and oriented towards the street.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I follow up?
Yes, Commissioner.
Commissioner Stapleton, just to follow on this discussion a little bit, is there, can you point us to the specific language in the draft plan that addresses this, just so that we can have an idea of what we're talking about, what actually, how that would be articulated-
Yes.
-in the code?
On page 91 of the proposed plan that you have.
Okay, I see, so it's 7A11.
Yes.
Okay. So, it's, "Primary buildings shall be oriented towards and access from the front yard and street with the main entrance located on the front facade." Okay, so that is what's in there, and in your memo, we're talking about that issue of requiring an entrance on Virginia Street.
Yes.
I would just add to this discussion that I think that there are, I think that having a door on Virginia Street isn't the sticking point. I think the sticking point is making sure we're creating, you know, an environment or streetscape that supports, supports and encourages pedestrian activity. I think that's what we're going for, so in my mind, you know, the easy way to do that is to do orientation towards the street. Now, if that means there always has to be a door on the street, well, maybe there are certain situations where that isn't ideal, but then the question is, if you take that away, how are you going to write it to make sure? Because this example is nice, but with taking that away, you essentially take away orientation, and then it would have to be, I don't know how you would write it to make sure that you get something like that and don't just get, you know, a parking lot in front instead, or something that's not pedestrian-friendly at all. So, that's my only worry with that, is I don't think the doors are the sticking point, it's that how do you say that to make sure you're still encouraging that pedestrian-oriented environment?
There is some level of protection throughout RMC, like parking lots are not allowed in the front of the building, and that'll come up later in the FAR discussion, but, so, and other design standards that relate to the orientation of the building, so the setback being zero and that kind of thing.
I mean, what it allows is, and this is, this is also has to do with the percentage of the, how much of the building is orient, how much of the percentage of the frontage of the property is building, because if there's no sort of, you know, limitation or sort of direction on that, then you could have, say, a skinny building with a parking lot on the side and the entrance to the side, and then that removes, you know, then you've got a parking lot in between the sidewalk and the door. Do you see what I'm saying? So, that is the orientation.
And under general, the base zoning for mixed use, I don't know if you can confirm this or not, but I believe it's 75% in this type of area that has to be building on the frontage. I believe that's what I read yesterday.
Okay, so if it's 75%, I guess it just, I guess, I guess what I'm asking is, how do you write that without having the, without requiring the door on the street? How do you write it to ensure, and I'm not saying we shouldn't, but just to make sure that we do that right, to ensure the pedestrian friendliness of it, so.
I agree. That was the tricky point yesterday, was nowhere they're trying to go, but I don't know how to ensure.
So, as we're going through this, I know if you could, could you do that, just call out to where we're looking at in the proposed plan?
Okay.
And then if there's any proposed language?
So, right now, she's still going through her presentation. We'll hold her questions until afterwards.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so the next part is the transition section. So, in the proposed plan on page 92, there were five mechanisms that were intended to assist with transitioning from an existing structure to potentially a structure of significantly higher mass or significantly higher height and larger mass. And at the last meeting, it was brought up that there was concern that maybe two wouldn't actually ensure an appropriate transition and be appropriate. So, I went back, and those largely came out of, or were the, the discussion started with the Wells Avenue Plan, which there was a big instant desire in that neighborhood to protect the existing character of the neighborhood as well. So, and they have three in their plan, and so we expanded it slightly, but the last, and there are, so, hold on, let me read them. So, you have the graduated building height, the orientation of windows and external living spaces towards, away from shared property lines, installing a canopy trees at the center, between the properties, and then pitch roof and overhang design and the use of dormers and sloping roofs. The last two might not be compatible to be used together, so there was a suggestion at the last meeting that it may be worth considering using three or four of those require, requiring three or four of those instead of requiring them to choose two. The Wells Avenue Plan actually calls out that they can use an appropriate combination of the three mechanisms they use, which are listed in the memo, but include, include again, the graduated height, the orientation of external living spaces, and the using an architectural feature- an architectural feature at ground level that, that complements adjacent properties. So, the, the proposed, or the considerations were, you could require three of those, you could require four of those that are in the plan, or you could require the use of appropriate mechanisms to be determined. So, and then, so that's the, those are the two issues that were brought up in the, that expand throughout the district. The next one is specific to commercial section, and that's on page ninety-three, the floor area ratio. There was a, a request last time to reduce or eliminate the one-point-oh FAR that is listed in the proposal. This, this was based off of the master plan and the, the overarching policies in the Truck Meadows Regional Plan, which again are lum, are written in your memo, so I'm not gonna read them, but they, in the South Virginia Street corridor, the, they mimic the regional plan, which has one-point-five or point, one-point-five within Todd Corridor Station Areas and Centers, and between those areas, a point-two-five. We, in our, in the South Virginia Street Plan, it actually says that south, north of Moana Lane, can't do my directions today either, that the FAR is point-five-zero or greater, and that, so anyways, sorry, the, the next diagram actually illustrates the difference in FARs, and I have some actual real-life pictures of what it looks like in the area as well. And obviously, one-hundred percent means you cover the entire usable space. The, and then fifty percent, so if you were only one-story, this would be fifty percent of the property. These are actually two-hundred percent FAR, or two-point-oh FARs. So, and so this is a multi-story building. This is not the best building, I'm sorry, but this building has a point-seven-eight FAR, and it has parking at the back, is, that you can't see, but I couldn't get the computer work right, so. This one is point-five-two. It might be a little deceptive because of the parking lot next door, but it's pretty, so it's here is the, the lot line. And the junkies building, which is spread out, is point-six-seven FAR. This two-story building is point-nine-six. This one is point-six-five. This is, the next one is the smallest footprint I could find in the district, and it's point-one-two. And the largest is one-point-six-six. A full two-story building across pretty much all of the lot. So, to be in conformance with the master plan and the regional plan, the recom, the considerations were provided that you could reduce it to point-five-zero. That would address some of the issue of allowing flexibility in design rather than having a building that goes from edge to edge and edge to edge of the, of the lot, or leave it at one-point-zero, which is pretty standard throughout the, the corridor. And that's the only issue that was brought up for specifically the commercial section. The residential section, the biggest issue was related to the density, and so the, the residential section throughout this section is sixteen units per the acre, and the request was to increase it to twenty-five or thirty, approximately three blocks from Virginia Street. So, it's a little deceptive. So, the blue line on here actually is the, the district boundary, and the individuals who requested the change to the proposal to allow increased density in the residential section, this is the red line, that's the area they requested. There was subsequent public comment received via email that requested twenty-five to thirty throughout the residential district, and the boundary line for the, between the residential and commercial is, doesn't look as green up there, is this jagged line right here. The, there was a request to look at the, the Plumas Plan and the, the density in that area, and so we did, and if it had stayed, if the area, if the residential district had stayed in the Plumas Neighborhood Plan, this area would have already been zone MF-thirty, so everything below this black line in the district would have been MF-thirty, and everything, or I guess that's above, the black line, and then below, south of, would have been MF-fourteen. And this is the actual Plumas Plan zoning, which actually has spots that go up to MF-forty-three. And again, and then, when we went back, MF-twenty-five actually does not exist in Reno Municipal Code, so if you were to increase the zoning of the residential area, part, in part or in whole, we would recommend that you stay with codified zoning, and that would be MF-twenty-one or MF-thirty. And so, those have been the considerations again. You could leave it as it is, or we have actually used the increasing it to MF-thirty simply because they requested twenty-five, and if you're going to increase it, it doesn't really accomplish what the request was at MF-twenty-one. So, and then the last issue actually is the setbacks, and that was brought up, it's on page eighty-eight in the table, eighteen-oh-eight, table eighteen-oh-eight dash-two-six, and these requirements are pretty consistent throughout the master, throughout the plan and the code for various neighbors, they're just pretty standard setbacks. The question was, are the side setbacks sufficient for separating buildings of either, especially if there's increased intensity? And so, they're five feet at this point, which would lead to a ten-foot separation between structures. Some of the lots are fairly narrow, so to increase it substantially would lead to some long, narrow buildings as opposed to frontages that are oriented towards the street. And so, the, we put the considerations at keeping the five-foot setbacks or increasing them to seven foot, and of course, you can do whatever you want, but that was just what we felt was reasonable. And then, there was a question about, a lot of the areas already developed, and so what happens if you get two buildings adjacent to the property you're constructing on, and one is oriented towards the back of the property and one is oriented more towards the front of property? Where do you determine the setback is? Because the way the setback reads is that it's not more than, doesn't vary, I think, more than three feet from the adjacent property line. So, there actually are other places that address that through the plan, and so we've just replicated that in terms of what is in the residential infill development standard that says, if you have that situation, you orient off the closest one to the street. And so, in this diagram, that has a variety of them, it would actually be up to the ten feet, because in the residential district, the front setback is up to ten feet, so. And then, I think that answers all of the questions that were raised at the last meeting. The, the consideration, the potential considerations there are again the same, retain the current with the administrative decision about where the setback actually falls, or you could actually replicate the language that's out of the residential infill development standards to say specifically, this is how you determine what, what the setback is if you find yourself in a situation where, with different setbacks on either side of your property. And then, there are two other requests. In looking more closely at it, we would request that if you do make a motion tonight to forward, or forward this for consideration by city council, that you allow us to make appropriate editing to the formatting of the document, and then there needs to be a clarification on page ninety-four to C-three under the residential section to clarify the the number of signage types that are allowed in businesses that are in the residential section, to, that it be no more than two types, two distinct signage types in any one individual business or by one tenant within a business, within a building, sorry. And so, that would be the two requests from staff, and I think I've gone on long enough, so.
Thank you very much. All right, at this time, I'd like to open public comment. I have a couple of request-to-speak forums. The first one is Chuck Shaw, and requests to make a statement. Please state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Honorable Commissioners Chuck Shaw, Virginia Street Plaza, five-five-five, South Virginia. And I'm, I'm convinced now, if we need to break the drought in this region, what we have to do is schedule another meeting on, on this subject, because every time I've had the opportunity to come over, we've had great rain. I first want to thank staff. Working through a zoning code amendment of any kind is very difficult, and I found one unifying force in the public comment that they created was, even though there was a divergency of opinion, everybody was united to a common goal, and that was to try to take this zoning district and make it the best possible. Not everybody's going to agree, I respect that. I brought to you one issue tonight, but I would like to bring one clarification for the benefit of the commission regarding the orientation discussed for the Virginia Street Plaza project, because it pertains to some of the items that you reviewed this evening. Just briefly, that project is a transit-oriented design retail center. If you've been to the project before, you will note that it has a large common area that encourages outside dining and other activities. We tried to differentiate each building and in each suite to give it some unique personality, but yet meld well within the community, hence the brick veneer design and construction. And then it's also designed as a normal retail center with standard retail widths, a delivery area, and a normal trash pickup area, so the facility can work like a retail ser, area. We fought to get the three-point-three-to-one parking ratio that we have, the FAR, including the common area is probably sitting right around point-four. Many, many of you may be aware, we have recently had the good fortune of opening two new tenants, Bat Cupcakeery and Grateful Gardens, both local operators, both great operators. We were concerned, as we still had thirty percent of our center available to us, or vacant to us, we knew if we opened all of the available tenants that were available, we would have had a parking nightmare worse than, if you've seen it recently, than it is currently now. So, I bring that to your attention, something to discuss, I'm gonna look at my timing, and it's gonna be fairly close. I do want to bring one other issue of concern from a retailer's perspective, or from a developer's perspective. The community no longer, and understandably, does not want payday-type loan facilities. With that understanding, they are prohibited, understandably, from the existing text amendment. But to facilitate that, that eliminates all financial institutions, including credit unions, local community banks, savings and loans, et cetera. We have proposed in the letter that I provided for you last, during your last meeting, but I did not have the opportunity to attend and copy to you this evening, is to recommend that financial institutions go through a, a, a special use permit process, going through the highest scrutiny, and if you reference the second page, second paragraph, there is a list of criteria, offering checking, savings, loans, from both commercial and consumer, but all of those criteria which are affixed to normal lending facilities. Prohibition is a difficult issue. I understand staff's concern and respect it, and I would respectfully request that you consider in your recommendations to city council this evening, that while we want to honor the community's commitment to no payday-type loan facilities, you do not want to eliminate financial institutions, especially new startup financial institutions that will support new tenants moving into the area, because this time, organizations like ours, Mr. Carter's, and, and many developers are the lending institution for the new businesses. The goal in a community like this is to create that
Thirty more seconds.
To create that same opportunity, create banking relationships for local merchants, and hopefully create the opportunity to foster more growth. Thank you very kindly.
Thank you very much. Next forum I have is Angela Watson, has checked, wish to make a statement?
Hi, I'm Angela Watson. I'm a resident of the Midtown overlay area and also a business owner, so I have vested interest in both areas of this, but tonight, I'm gonna tell you I'm full support of what they want to do in the commercial, but I do have some issues with the changes that are being proposed for the residential area. I attended every meeting, I was not here at the last planning commission meeting because I was out of town, but I did attend every neighborhood meeting. I listened to many of the residents, we all discussed where these lines would go, what would be where, we listened to what everyone had to say, and these lines are just going right back to where we started, where we as residents came together and said, we want our neighborhood to be preserved in a certain way. I'm not even exactly sure if I understand which lines are which colors, and if the red ones are supposed to now be commercial, or if they're actually residential, just with different proposed density, but my point is that I just want it to stay lower density. I'm very much in support of keeping the residential area lines where they were, and I don't know if this map accurately relays where the commercial and the residential start and stop, but I think that the residential area should be MF, MF-sixteen. I live in the neighborhood, I look around at everything that's around there, and I think that two homes or whatever there is on the current lots looks nice. To preserve, preserve the neighborhood as it is, we need to be careful and not let bigger buildings and too many buildings into small spaces, and I'm looking at this change from what we asked for of MF-sixteen to MF-twenty-five, and then now there's this MF-thirty, I, I'm kind of confused. So if these kind of changes are gonna be made by the commission to the amendments, I would like to at least see us as residents explain what's happening. This all happened very quickly, but we spent many, many hours deciding where these lines should be with respect to the people that own property in those areas that want to have businesses, with respect to the people that live in those areas, and I, it's all happening so fast. I'm confused, but yet I was very clear on what was happening before last meeting, your planning commission meeting just on the twentieth, I think it was? Now I'm all confused, I don't even know. So I would like to be in support of the commercial part of the overlay. I am in opposition of the changes to the amendment to change it to MF-twenty-five or MF-thirty or whatever, I, I, I'm kind of confused. And I want it clear where these lines between commercial and residential are being drawn, because the residents and the business owners that attended every meeting, we clearly understood where the map stood, but I don't understand this one. So, I'm just, that's all I have to say, is I really want to see the residents heard before any drastic changes are made to that residential section. The commercial, go for it, build some stuff, I think it's awesome. Orientation would be Orientation would be, you know, I'm in support of all those other things, but the residential's where I live and I'm raising my family, and I'm really concerned about what's going to come in around me and my other neighbors. And I see a lot more of them here than I think were at the last meeting. And these are the same faces that helped make those decisions in all of those neighborhood meetings that we did. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next forum I have, Andrew Zeiser.
Good evening, Commissioners, my name's Andrew Zeiser and I'm a resident of the Midtown District. And similarly, I would just like to note my opposition to the increase in allowable density within the residential district. I believe that the integrity of the neighborhood and a lot of the aesthetic standards can only be maintained with a lower density limitation. One of the primary objections brought up is that future development projects would not be viable with this restriction, but I'd like to point to the property at seven fifteen Forest Street, which is brought up as an example in prior discussions, and that has a density, I believe, of MF thirteen or fifteen. That's, I think that's a very aesthetic and appropriate project that was developed within the last five years, is a really good fit in the neighborhood and demonstrates viability. And so I just want to be very clear that I do not think that the higher density allowance is appropriate. Another concern I have that I don't hear raised frequently at the meetings is on the pragmatic impact of the higher densities, and that for me pertains to traffic and parking. There is a lot of traffic in the neighborhood, and I think that both the residential and commercial owners understand that parking is a real problem in the area. And the more density that is allowed, the more traffic impact there's going to be, and the more parking restrictions there are going to be. And so I just want to make sure that pragmatic concerns are balanced with aesthetic concerns. And again, just to be clear, I oppose the increase in density for the residential district. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next forum I have is Bernie Carter, wishes to make a statement. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you, my name is Bernie Carter, and we're involved with the Sticks project and a variety of different projects in the Midtown area. As alluded to earlier, there are two issues that I'd like to talk about, one is the orientation. And I have an example of the orientation that is currently being constructed and has been approved prior to this meeting on the Sticks project. Can you back that up just a little bit? So, can I turn it this way? So the Sticks project is currently under construction, the two new buildings that you see are part of this project. There'll be a total of sixteen buildings in this project. To orient you, South Virginia Street is here, and then this street has been put in that goes all the way to Center Street. This was designed specifically to create an environment of a small town, a small environment that we're trying to do in the, in our project, and we think will be continued to be done in the Midtown project. There are three other sites in the Midtown area that are equal to this portion of this site. So I encourage you to consider that when you talk about flexibility. In this particular project, as you can see, we are oriented primarily towards the parking area and to the plaza that is being developed. All of the buildings face that way, all of them have entrances to that. In addition, we followed the South Virginia Street corridor plan with the sidewalk construction that we put in on South Virginia Street. So even with that, and making it as walkable as possible, orientation is still towards the inside, and we recommend that you follow the recommendations of staff regarding not having to have, not having to have specific doorways on South Virginia Street, but have it be accessible via transport, via walking by the general public. Here's another example of a, of a building that we're contemplating building on the same site. And as you can see, that would be constructed at the corner of Toma and South Virginia Street, but the orientation is towards the inside, not towards the, the street side. So I encourage you to do that. In addition, in regarding to the, to the FAR regulations, if you, if you look back on page five of the handout that you got today, it refers to floor areas in the TOD of point two-five, and we would suggest that, that that be the, the appropriate coverage ratio for that. In our particular project is a point five-oh, in the Midtown project is a point five-oh, and we believe that that would be appropriate for additional development and encourage additional development in that area. In addition, if you do select to go to the point five-oh, we request that streets and parking, because we're encouraging parking off the alley, that that be considered part of the ratios when you do the FAR. Keep in mind, we also have landscape requirements and other requirements for construction. But if you include streets, sidewalks, and parking as part of that FAR in a point five, then I think that would be adequate. If you, if you do not or decide not to, then I request that you go to a point two-five. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Another forum here, Barry O'Sullivan, wishes to make a statement. Please state your name for the record, you all have three minutes.
My name is Barry O'Sullivan, and I have property in the Midtown area, numerous units from Tahoe Street to West Taylor. And I came to this meeting tonight because I found out at forty-five minutes before this meeting was starting, and I can't understand why the neighborhood in the area is not being notified zoning changes, you know, we've been in the area for fifty years, I have built many, many buildings there. And I always seem to get my tax bill on that, but I never seem to get any notification that you're changing the zoning or looking at it. And I, I don't know why nobody gets these notices. I would think I get it for one of the properties. I get my sewer bill, I get my tax bill, I get all that, I don't know how these people have been notified, but I never get nothing. I found out from Bernie Carter at five fifteen today about this meeting. So regarding zoning, you know, it's, it was community commercial when I first started, it's changed from MF forty-three to MF thirty-two, MF thirty-four, it was, it's all over, but I never knew about those changes either. And I just don't know why we can't get out notices to these people. I paid thirty-four thousand dollars last year in taxes, and so I think I can at least get a postcard for forty-five cents saying, we're going to be talking about this. So I think that's all I ask for. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'll close public comment. Does anybody else wishes to speak on this item? All right, closing public comment. At this time, I'll bring it back to the commission for questions for staff. Who would like to go first?
Marilyn Craig, Deputy City Attorney. One of your commissioners was not present at the last meeting, and if you would ask him to disclose what action he has taken to update and inform himself of the information that was gathered at the last meeting, that would be helpful.
Sounds good. Commissioner, would you like to state your actions on that agenda item?
Commissioner Olivas, I've read all the material provided and I watched the video of the, of the last meeting.
Thank you. All right, questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Fisher Weiski.
Staff, Jody? Now that you're ready for questions and answers, I hope, let's discuss the, go back to my original questions regarding the facade, specifically page ninety-one, paragraph seven A, one point one. Says, "Primary buildings shall be oriented towards and accessed from the front yard and street with the main entrance located on the front facade of the building." So what this is saying is that the front facade of the building, I believe what it's trying to say is the front facade of the building is supposed to be oriented towards South Virginia, is that correct?
The, if you go through RMC and read all the various pieces that apply to this, the front facade of the building is on any building, the, the part of the building that faces the most traveled street. So in this case, it would be Virginia Street.
Okay. I want to pick on Mr. Carter's project if we can for a few minutes. Are all of the, the individual buildings that we see there, are those addressed as South Virginia, or are they addressed as the new drive-through that, that Mr. Carter is putting in? Do you know?
Going to have to ask Bernie to confirm, but I believe they all have a Virginia Street.
Mr. Carter, would you, can you come up and address that question, please?
Yes, my name is Bernie Carter, and they all do have South Virginia Street accesses, even though
Addresses.
Addresses, that's correct. Even though the ones that are based on Toma Street,
Yes.
That you see Toma Street, they actually face towards the inner courtyard, so the driving area there. They still have South Virginia Street addresses.
Thank you. So, Jody, let's, let's look at the, at the buildings then that are on Toma Street, which would be though, that, that group of buildings right there. Based upon what this says, those buildings all have to have access doors facing west to South Virginia Street.
No, the frontage is still defined in this case as Toma. That would be
But their addresses are on South Virginia, and we just established that if the address is South Virginia, then the facade is to face and the entrance is to face South Virginia, right?
No, the definition that's actually given in, in RMC would make it Toma, because it's the most traveled street. That they, that they adjac, that they're adjacent to. So if you were talking about
Okay, so I see those, just move your finger to the left, just a little bit, the other left, I guess, here, right there, those two buildings that are on Toma Street and then the four east of that, those four, those four would not require entrances to South Virginia, correct?
Correct.
Okay, the buildings on the inside, what, what street do they, you, you see where I'm going with this? And, and I'm, and that's why I said I wanted to pick on this for a minute, because I'm, I'm not so sure that in a development like this, that although the, the front yard in some of those buildings may face South Virginia, and to have display or, or windows facing South Virginia isn't appropriate, or is the most, that's probably the most appropriate orientation, but the entrances are from the inside of the development. That makes more sense to me, especially with the walkways that this project in particular, and a project similar that, to this, would have, that would create that walkability that we're trying to generate.
Yes, I, I think that, that is the issue is that Mr. Carter brought up, is that you can require it to be your typical Main Street entrance, but that means you get one type of building. This creates pedestrian walk pathways and walkways and, and moveability, but doesn't conform to that requirement. So how do you get it so that, because you do want, and they still have, the street, the windows along the streets you can see, and, and, but the door is the killer at this point. And so how do you define building orientation is the thing, and oddly enough, we don't define it, so.
Okay, and, and I, where I'm going with this is, if I'm a developer in the Midwest and I say, you know, I hear Reno's booming, and I want to go build something in this new Midtown area, I get online and I look at this Midtown plan without calling a planner or calling a, an architect or staff or anybody, and I start reading, how would I know what's going to be acceptable before I start investing a lot more time? You, you see what I'm saying? This document should, to a certain degree, explain, can't explain all of it, but maybe better, explain what the options are.
Correct, and that, and that is what I was trying to do with the, the first option to take out the door, but, or the second option, maybe, I've lost my page, sorry. The, to, to take out the door requirement and allow it to be oriented, I mean, that you have that certain path, the pathways language more so than the entrance language.
Okay. I understand that, I think it needs a little bit more work before I can get behind it. And without getting into comments and discussion right now, I think that, that, I think there's a reasonable resolution to this, it's maybe in your options, and I think we need to look at it for, not for a specific development project, but for the future development projects of this whole Midtown area. Also, I'm going to move on from that. Clarify the density boundaries for both commercial and residential, I, that's your street map with the red, black, and the blue lines?
Okay, so, so first I'll put back up the map that's actually in the master plan amendment
Okay.
To demonstrate what the boundaries are. So we had a hard time last time identifying any streets on this map, and it was quite a show. So, so you can see that the boundary is between, is the difference between the light and the dark, this is residential, this is commercial. So in this section, along the extra dark blue line, that's Virginia Street, and it has a minimum of eighteen units per acre. The balance of the blue section has thirty units to the acre, the light blue section has sixteen units to the acre.
Okay, so right now, we have MF thirty in the dark blue west of South Virginia. And in the lighter blue, we have MF sixteen.
Yes.
So not everything is MF sixteen in there.
Correct.
Okay. Go ahead.
So
Jody, I need you to speak into the mic, please.
Can you speak into the mic for us?
Oh.
You can take the mic with you if you need to. It'll work.
What do you want me to repeat?
No, keep going.
Okay, so, and at one point, this line before I tried to do very many things with it, or this map, so you can, so this, the request was to change this entire area within the red, that was the base of this map, to MF twenty-five.
Which is currently zoned, some of it is MF thirty and some of it is MF sixteen?
Sixteen, yes.
Okay.
And so to put it in context of the district, I drew the district line in blue.
Okay.
And then the green line here that goes down is the line for what would have been the dark and light blue on this one.
So trace that with your finger real quick.
The green line?
The line, the green line, on, no, on, go back, on the street map, yes, please.
So
Okay, that's the green line that you were showing us.
On this map.
Yes, okay. All right, so, so that's all commercial and MF thirty.
On the
West.
East side.
East side, okay.
Of the green line. The west side of the green line is all MF sixteen.
Sixteen, okay.
And then, do you want me to keep going to what's on this map? So
Keep, keep going.
There's a black line that crosses here.
Right.
So the Plumas Plan used to, there's a pencil line here actually, incorporate much of the Midtown District. And so the, in the, under the Plumas Neighborhood Plan, this black line, north of there was MF thirty, south of there was MF fourteen, within the district, east to Virginia Street. Have I lost everybody now?
You're getting close, keep going, though.
That's the end of it.
Okay. Is there a way that, given a little bit more time, like until our May meeting, if this were to be continued one more time, that you could enlarge this and clean it up a little bit so that not only the residents, but those of us planning commissioners who aren't part of this neighborhood would understand where these lines are a little better?
I can definitely try.
Okay.
I think with Nathan's technologically, technological help, yes, that would be doable.
Okay. Okay. I personally would see that as being very helpful. One last question for you, because I know you've been attending meetings for several months since midtown started going forward. Can you describe the practice of noticing for the midtown meetings to this point?
So, there are a number of ways that that happens. The notices for, that are required by NRS are sent out via postcard. So, for the master plan amendment, that was the primary for the legal required meetings. However, we did establish an email list, as well as then notified any entities within the district, if it was an individual, or they have the Midtown District Business Association, that's not what it's called, but that's, you know, the group that meets, and they have a list served, that they serve it out to, send it out to. So, we sent it, we send stuff via the email list out to the business group, and then for the zoning text amendments specifically, even though it wasn't required by law for the neighborhood meetings, we had a series of three of them, and we sent out a postcard that identified the first two of those.
Okay, and where did that postcard go, to everybody in?
It went to every, it was done the same as a legally required notice, so it was to the, unduplicated property owners within the district.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all I have. I have one other question. Andrew, I believe it was, would you come back up to the microphone for a second? You gave an address of a property as an example, and I didn't write it down completely.
It's 715 Forest Street.
715 Forest?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Jody, for you. One of the options you have in here for the commissioners, for the side setbacks, from five to seven, if that's what we wanted, but sitting in that meeting, I thought we all agreed, because of some of the narrowness of the lots, that we kind of agreed that the five-foot was adequate. And I guess, you know, so I don't know how this got in here.
It's not a recommendation, it's just for consideration, because the comment was, the concern I took away was that there was concern about, is five-feet setback, a five-foot side setback sufficient to protect one existing property that may, you know, has a certain character from the development on the next, in terms of character and stuff, I believe is kind of the way it was.
Mr. Chairman, if I can interrupt Jody for a second. The concern was from me, and as Jody described it, and I asked questions of staff, there was, there's quite a few properties in the area that have a greater setback, and I wanted to know, so I wanted additional information on what some of the existing setbacks were. I took a drive-through, looking specifically at setbacks, very few of them are at five-feet around there, and most of them are greater than that, and if we're going to keep the integrity of the neighborhood, maybe we should consider something that's a little bit wider. That's where the concern came from, and that's where Jody, why she went looking for, and put additional information in here.
But the setbacks are a minimum of five feet, right? They can be greater.
No, I'm questioning what it says. It actually is just five feet, period. No minimum, no maximum?
Back to my concern, where maybe it should be written up as a minimum.
Vern is saying that, because it's written that way, it is a minimum. Sorry, you get the learner.
Okay.
Okay, I'll wait till we have discussion. Thanks, Jody.
Sorry.
Any other questions at this time? All right, thank you. At this time, we'll bring back to the board for discussion. Anybody want to get started with discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll lead it on. I agree with Commissioner Wieske. I think we should postpone this till our next meeting. I think there's some issues. I'd like to see a firm document, not something that we need to make conditions at this meeting at, so I would second a motion that we postponed.
Commissioner Stapleton?
I would agree that it would be great to see, maybe just this section sort of taken out, with some of these amendments that we're talking about, you know, actually, you know, drafted into a language, you know, so that we can, for example, on the orientation, to see exactly how we could articulate, you know, orientation of the street without having a door on there. I do think that the memo was good, and there's a lot of good points in there, and I think it might be good to have discussion on a couple of these, to give staff guidance in the direction that we want to go, so that when we come back at the next meeting, we can maybe have just this section taken out with highlights of the stuff we've talked about, and actual language for how some of these changes we've been talking about tonight would look in this, in this plan. That's my suggestion.
Commissioner Wieske?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to the neighborhood who showed up tonight that didn't show up last month. We ask that we get more, you guys get more people here, and this is great. This is, the things that we've heard tonight, some of them we heard last month, some of them are new concerns this month, and these are the things that we want to hear, we want your input. This is your neighborhood, this is your plan, we just want to do what we do best in trying to modify it, so that when it goes to city council, it's something that city council can really get their hands around and move forward on, and it makes sense to them. With that being said, Jody, you did a great job, thank you very much for this packet of information, and as we discussed earlier, and has been discussed here in the last couple of minutes, there's some additional modifications that we would like to work with you on, to get additional information, things that will explain it to us better, explain it to the neighborhood better, and then we know, when we make the recommendation to move this forward to council, that we're all on the same page, and we've got the best document going forward that we can. With that, Paul, I don't want to step on you, but I would make a motion for continuation when you've made your comments.
I don't really have any comments, just listening to all this and absorbing it, I think it'd be good to go ahead and continue it.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more comment.
Commissioner Kaufman.
And this is to the commissioners, do we need another workshop on this? Especially with some of the comments and things that were brought out tonight, so I'd throw that out there.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Stapleton.
I do actually think that we should have discussion on a couple of these things, just so we're giving staff direction on what we want drafted for next time, so, you know, I agree with moving to continue it, but I think we should have a little bit more discussion based on this memo, she's given us choices, and I think we got to, you know, decide if we want more information on those choices, or to pick some of those choices, so that when we come back, we have something more concrete, or a workshop, I don't know.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, and to come back, it's almost that we have some more work to do, not only, because this document, what we tried to do was make this so it was more developer-friendly, and that's why I almost think we need another workshop.
So, let's go ahead and start with Commissioner Stapleton. Do you think a workshop, or just kind of going over through discussion now on several items for direction?
I mean, I don't know, we've done so many workshops on this, you know, I do think we should have a little bit more discussion on, for example, the density in the residential, we haven't really discussed that, you know. I don't know if we need a different forum within which to do that, maybe we ask staff if that's even, you know, possible, considering how many times that we've met on this, but I think, I think, I don't know, I would ask staff what's sort of reasonable, but I do think we need to have discussion, and we might be able to do that tonight, on the residential piece and the density there, at least as well as some of these design standards.
Thank you. Commissioner Levis?
I guess, one comment I had was, it's kind of difficult, and I haven't been involved, as involved in this process, being newer to the commission, but I look at the examples, and some of the examples on the orientation and the door, those appear to be much smaller lots, and much smaller properties, that actually it makes sense to have a door facing the street. You look at the example that we looked at, and it actually opens up, and that would not make sense to have a door to the street. So, I guess I can't figure out how you'd even word that, to have a dividing line, if it's something on the size of the project, or how that would go. I think that Mr. Carter's development would not make sense to have doors to the streets, and that, how do you accommodate that and get that in? It's a great job of opening up the walking, I believe, and the examples that we've seen aren't even applicable to that type of a development, and how would you get the wording? I don't know. I guess that's probably something that probably, I don't know how you would address it.
Commissioner Wieske?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To maybe address Commissioner Stapleton's concern about further discussion, I think that's the benefit of the workshop, when that's the only thing on our agenda, and we could sit here for another two to three hours, and maybe still not get it resolved tonight. We would still want to bring it back. Yet, if we had a special meeting, and we spent two, three, four hours doing it, where we didn't have other items on the agenda, and, you know, we're not, I don't know of anything, staff has not told me of any reasons that this has to be completed by a certain date, due to time deadlines, and, you know, maybe that's our best forum, is to do it that way. Just a suggestion. You know?
All right, so, my opinion is, we have had several workshops on this, but there were so many questions raised tonight, that I'm afraid that to answer them all would maybe more time than we have, or we'll be able to do this evening. Another workshop is possible, and at this time, I would like to ask staff?
Commissioners, we'd like to offer that, there is no real critical timeframe for this project, so we would offer a workshop to have open discussion, and to make some presentations about maybe what different things look like, or wording, we can kind of do a little more wordsmithing one-on-one, that kind of thing.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more question. Jody, what was the last thing that you said you'd like us to consider?
Oh, there are, I need to do some editing to the format, I found a problem, and then we need to clarify that there are two types of signs allowed per business in the residential section.
Okay, so the signing allowed, and...
And the proposal for that was to take out two words in the actual statement, and it was single and building, it was per tenant.
Okay, so, to me, there's five things that we all need to come on a consensus before it's brought back to us.
Okay.
Okay, and that's a density issue, you know, which seems to be an issue, the FAR, so we can come to a consensus on that, the building orientation, and then the setbacks too, along with the signing. You know, those are, are the five things I'd like to see brought before us, and the discussion at a workshop.
Okay.
Anybody else like to add anything?
Commissioner Stapleton, I just have one to add to that, is the discussion of the design standards that we had last time, I think that's part of the density discussion in the residential.
Well, isn't that part of the business orientation, or the building orientation?
That's, the design standards was part of the density discussion, I think? Or not, just as long as it's in there somewhere.
It is because it impacts, because it's triggered by an increase in density or size of a building, and so then the question would be, is, would you be looking for specific ones for the residential, because the ones in there are for throughout the district? So, would you like specific ones for the residential area?
I just wanted to add that, Commissioner Stapleton, I just want to add that to Commissioner Kaufman's list, just to make sure it was on there for discussion, and I did just notice that, that those apply to all of the neighborhood, the district, but when we talked about it last time, I think, at least I was, when we were talking about specific to residential, so if that's something we could have as part of the discussion, whether those are just specific to residential or the whole district. And I would just add two more things to the suggestion for the workshop, that we have, I thought your memo was great, but if for some of these, you know, this is sort of where we got into the weeds on the orientation, where's the front door discussion, if we could have some specific language of what that would look like, so that we can sort of chew on it and see if we think that would work or not, because I think the issue is the design and the walkability, not necessarily where the front door is, so how do you write that? And then, just one other request, if we're going to have a workshop, is there a way we could pass around a list, so that everyone here could put their email, just to make sure there's, if there's someone who's not on your list, they can make sure to be on your list, and I know that there's, I don't, I heard that there's another midtown entity, so that maybe there may be another avenue, and some folks here might know about it, to reach out to the midtown merchants through, so, yes.
Thank you. Thank you. At this time, I'll take a motion for continuance and a recommendation for a workshop.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Wieske?
In the case of midtown text amendment, TXT 12-00009, I make a motion that we have a continuance. I would recommend that it is the week of April 22nd. Jody, are you, that's two weeks out? Okay, so that would be the week of 22nd, I don't know how that works with everybody, but that would be my recommendation, let staff work on the date that week. Or try and get all those planning commissioners together at once, but that's my motion.
Do I have a second?
I can second the motion, but I can't second the date. I think we need to, staff work with us, I happen to just be out of town that week.
What would, Commissioner Wieske, what would, the week after that, we've got, goes into our May meeting, have two meetings that week, or wait till after the May meeting, and then bring it back in June?
Yeah, I'd rather have two meetings that week, or the Thursday after our meeting. I think the staff's just going to have to work and get the most of us, you know, there.
On my motion, I will withdraw the week of April 22nd, and leave it to staff to put together the meeting at the first available time, when we can all... to put together the meeting at the first available time when we can all make it.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Great, I have a first and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, signify by saying nay. Let the record show that the motion passes five to zero.
Mr. Chairman, once again, I'd just like to say thank you to the audience that's here from Midtown. Every chance you guys get, please tell your neighbors, friends, people shopping there, help us out, get a lot of people to the workshop and the next meetings coming up. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. All right, moving on to item number nine, public hearings. Any person who has chosen to provide his or her public comment when a public hearing is heard will be, will need to do so by indicating a request to speak form provided to the secretary. Alternately, you may provide a comment when item three, public comment, is heard at the beginning of the meeting. Okay, next on the list is case number LDC 13-00044, Geiger Grade Master Plan Amendment. Call staff to the podium, or applicant representative, please.
Good evening, planning commissioners. For the record, my name is Melissa Lindell with Wood Rogers. With me tonight, Ted Aircon, who is with Lewis Operating Corp. This is a three-acre parcel located south of Veterans Parkway and east of Geiger Grade. It is in the southeast neighborhood planning area. This parcel was a remnant parcel that was owned by the city of Reno and has subsequently been sold to Lewis Operating Corp. It, due to the public nature of the ownership originally, it was master planned as open space and public area. And we are requesting a change from the green public area to the orange, which is part of the Pioneer Parkway Development, Pioneer Parkway Holding Company Plan Unit Development Area. So the purpose of this, it's kind of a two-phased project. You'll see the next item is the zone change, but this is the initial stage, which is the master plan amendment. So with that, I'd be available for questions at the appropriate time, and I'll talk about the zoning in the Plan Unit Development Handbook at the next, with the next item. Thank you.
Thank you. This time, can we have staff, Vern?
Good evening, Vern Close, Senior Planner. As indicated in Ms. Lindell's presentation, this is a master plan amendment to bring this particular piece into the Pioneer Parkway Holding Company master plan designation of special planning area. It would be appropriate for adding it to the PUD if this is approved. The existing PF master plan designation on it is, again, an historic remnant of it, converting from county to city, and then also the city's ownership of the property. At this point, it's better associated with and consolidated within the Pioneer Parkway area. It would be, could be developed eventually under the same set of standards. Staff believes that the findings necessary for the master plan amendment can be made and are recommending approval subject to conditions, or subject to compliance with, or conformance review by regional planning. Be happy to answer any questions at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. At this time, do we have any disclosures on this item? Okay, see, now we'll go to public comment. I'd like to open public comment. Do we have any forms?
No, we do not.
Thank you. At this time, we'll close public comment. Bring it back to the commission for questions, discussion?
Mr. Chairman, Marilyn Craig, Deputy City Attorney. I want to disadvise you that Exhibit A is for illustrative purposes only. It would not be considered part of the master plan. It's just there for you to see the types of uses that might become available if you were to change this particular plan, but it will not be part of the master plan itself.
Great, thank you very much. Do we have any questions? If not, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Wieski?
In the case of LDC 13-00044, Geiger Grade Master Plan Amendment, based upon compliance with the applicable considerations, I move to adopt the amendment to the master plan by resolution and recommend city council do the same, subject to conformance review by the regional planning agency. And I can make all the findings.
Great, thank you. Do you have a second?
Commissioner Stapleton, I can make the findings. I'll second the motion.
Great, I have a first and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, signify by saying nay. Let the motion, let the record show that the motion passed five to zero. All right, moving on to two, item two under public hearings, case number LDC 13-00045, Geiger Grade Zoning Map Amendment. Applicant representatives, please.
Thank you. For the record, Melissa Lindell with Wood Rogers, and I have Ted Aircon with me with Lewis Operating Corporation. This is the follow-up to the master plan amendment, which you just heard. And again, we have the three-acre site located south of Veterans Parkway and east of Geiger Grade, and it is currently zoned public facility. And the request is to rezone it PUD and put it in with the Pioneer Parkway Holding Company Design Guidelines. There are a couple of items that came up when we started looking at this. First of all, with the ownership with Lewis Operating Corporation right now, it makes sense to include it in with the PUD so it will be developed under the same design guidelines, so it'll be consistent. They do own this piece, which is south of the Veterans Parkway area. And when we were looking at the handbook, we decided that there were some changes that needed to be made at the handbook to make sure that development of that parcel, which totals about 7.88 acres, would be consistent with the adjacent residential. And the first one has to do with height standards, and that was a modification in the handbook. And the second has to do with requiring additional one-to-one setbacks. So those changes are recommended in the handbook. And the second item of change in the handbook has to do with the existing uses, which are Exhibit A, which Marilyn mentioned in the previous project, but it's applicable to this project because it's the design handbook. And that has to do with off-premise signs and billboards. And it's just a little clarification that puts a note in there that any off-site signs or billboards have to comply with the current Reno Municipal Code. So with that, those are the changes. It makes a lot of sense, so all these properties will be developed under the same design guidelines. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Vern?
Vern Close, Senior Planner. I believe Melissa went through the changes, and we believe that the clarification on the billboards, basically, any billboards or off-premise signs that could be proposed in this area would be required to be consistent with the spacing and adjacency requirements of any place else in code. And this is more of a clarification. And then with the building height, we felt it was appropriate to reduce the height from 85 feet to 50 feet by right and have a one-to-one height to setback ratio so that the adjacent residential uses aren't, don't have a big tall building constructed right next to them. And if they want to go taller than that, then a special use permit would be required. So that, in conjunction with the existing standards, staff believes this is an appropriate change in zoning and recommend approval. I did, this was reviewed by the NAB, and we did not receive any comments at all on the zone change. And I forgot, we got a couple of questions on the master plan, but they were just informational. That concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. This time, I'd like to ask for any disclosures? No? All right, open public comment. Do we have any request to speak forms? All right, thank you. At this time, I'll close public comment. Bring it back to the commission for questions, discussion? Motion? Commissioner Olivas?
Commissioner Olivas, in case number LDC 13-00045, Geiger Grade Zoning Map Amendment, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend that the city council approve the zoning map amendment and the amendment to the Pioneer Parkway Holding Company PUD by ordinance, subject to approval of the master plan amendment for LDC 13-00044 by the regional planning agency and condition A. And I can make the findings.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Commissioner Wieski, I'll make second, and I can make the findings.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Could I ask for one clarification? Could you include the additional of the, to Exhibit One, which we provided to you tonight? Because that was not included in the staff report. So I just wanted to make that clear on the record, that those changes were included in your motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Check to amend your motion?
Commissioner Olivas, I'll amend my motion to include Exhibit One.
And I will amend my second to that also, and I can make those findings.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, signify by saying nay. Let the record show the motion passes five to zero. Thank you very much. Moving on to number three of our public hearings, LDC 13-00046, Village at Lakeside. At this time, this item has been postponed until further notice. Moving on to item number four, case number LDC 13-00019, Verdi Fire Station. May I have the applicant representative, please?
Good evening, commissioners. For the record, Angela Foose with CFA Planning and Engineering, representing the applicant, the Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District. The application before you tonight is a special use permit to allow a fire station to be located adjacent to residentially zoned property and for hillside development. The property is located on a five-acre parcel. It is zoned public facility. The zone change was before you last fall. The previous use was a residential development. And again, the zoning has changed and is now a public facility. The separation of the two fire districts, the Reno Fire Department and the Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District, has left some gaps in coverage. And so this facility will provide coverage to those areas of the unincorporated Collin Ranch and Verdi area. We are taking an existing single-family property. We're going to tear down the old use, which was a log cabin house, and we're going to put in a new fire station. So we're getting rid of everything that was there before, putting in a new facility. It's about 7,600 square feet. This will allow for an apparatus bay that will hold up to four fire trucks, as well as a dormitory and office. The site plan is consistent with everything in code in terms of landscaping setbacks. We do trigger hillside development, but we have met the open space requirements. We are, again, meeting everything within code outside of that. There are several conditions of approval. The applicant is in agreement with all those conditions of approval, and we are available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Staff?
Vern Close, Senior Planner. This is a fairly state-forward project. The standards have all been met as far as development of the site and the hillside ordinance. We received no correspondence or phone calls of any kind on this particular project, and it was heard by the Northwest NAB. Staff is recommending approval, subject to conditions. I'd be happy to answer any questions, should you have them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, can I call for any disclosures? Okay, moving on, we'll open public comment. Do we have any forms to request to speak?
No, we do not.
Thank you very much. Anybody would like to speak on this item? If not, we'll close public comment. Bring him back to the commission for questions. Commissioner Stapleton?
I have a question for the applicant, Angela. The zoning to the east there, that's MF 14?
Correct.
And it's vacant, though?
There is a, let me see if I have an aerial. There's actually a residential structure, but it is quite a ways away. And there's actually so much topography separating this site and that site that visually, they can't, the two uses will not be able to see each other.
And then a follow-up question. Because it's a fire station next to residential, are there other fire stations in town? And forgive my lack of knowledge about the fire stations in town and where they're located, that are next to residential? And are there any sort of mitigation that they do? Do they, you know, do they use sirens, say, if it's the middle of the night and they're, you know, going out of the station and it's?
That's probably a better question for staff. I mean, I can tell you that absolutely there are fire stations next to residential development all over the city of Reno and Washoe County. When you move into an area and you see that there's a fire station next to you, you know there's going to be noise. There's no residential development directly adjacent to us. There's nothing developed on this parcel or this parcel. This is an existing church. It's about 750 feet away. Actually, I misspoke. There's no development on this parcel. There are residential structures on these parcels here, but they're quite a distance away. There are things you can do. Staff has not conditioned anything specifically in terms of noise, distance for sirens. There's some life safety issues that come into account, but for this particular project, staff has not put any conditions in terms of noise or lights on the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Discussion? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Wieski?
In the case of LDC 13-00019, Verdi Fire Station, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permit, subject to conditions, and I can make all of the findings.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Commissioner Stapleton, I can make the findings. I'll second the motion.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, signify by saying nay. Let the record show the motion passes five to zero.
And Mr. Chairman?
Look at your project, thank you.
Marilyn Craig, Deputy City Attorney. Would you read the appeal, please?
Yes. Any action taken by the planning commission on tentative maps, special use permit, variance, or Skyway is final unless appealed. Any persons agreed by the decision may file an appeal. Each person, entity must make his, hers, its own appeal. Appeals must be filed with the city clerk within 10 days of the planning commission hearing by submitting the appropriate form and fee. All other matters will be forwarded to the city council with planning commission recommendation. Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll move on to number five under public hearings. This is case LDC 13-00047, 1864 Tavern. May I have the applicant representative, please? You'll have, please state your name for the record.
Yeah, Sean Plunkett, 1864 Tavern. Thank you, commissioners, head commissioner. My name is Sean Plunkett. I'm owner of the 1864 Tavern that's going on in, on 290 California Avenue. First off, just let me assure the planning department that we are voicing any concerns to the local community. I think we've done a pretty good job talking to our, the residential and the business owners that surround the area. Sorry, I got to move this. And any concerns that they may have, we have an open door, and we are willing to work any issues that they have out. The overwhelming people that we talk to in the area that are going by this vibrant area in California, on California Avenue, support this venture. I'm asking for... I'm asking for a special use permit to operate between the hours of 11:00 and 2:00 a.m. I under, I own, excuse me. I own Cantina Los Trés Sombres in Sparks, so I'm well aware of the noise and the logistics of operating a bar slash restaurant. And so I'm not a rookie in this area. We've cleaned up the area downtown in Victorian Avenue quite a bit since we took over six years ago. So we know the logistics of running, running a bar. Let me just run down the police department's concerns, and I'm going to jockey between the staff report and the police department concerns and address those. Okay, pedestrian crossing. I've never put in a crosswalk before, so I would like some recommendations on how to do this between, across Humboldt Street. But I'm more than willing to talk to the city about putting this in, putting in a light at crosswalk in, which was one of the police department's recommendations. The noise concerns, this seems to be the big one. You'll hear from, from Tim here in a minute. But we are not going to have live music. We're not going to have any sort of loud atmosphere going on in our place. We're not going to have TVs. We're not going to have gaming. We're going to have a really upscale establishment. And I brought this picture in just to show the, the women in the room what the bathroom's going to look like, because I think the, the look of a woman's bathroom really tells what kind of place you're going to have. And I will find it, I'm sorry. There we go. Something like that. I know it kind of seems like a moot point, but the kind of bathrooms you have really exemplify what kind of clientele you're going to have in your, in your place. So a lot of the noise concerns and a lot of littering, and I know, I talked to Tim yesterday, brought up urinating on the property. It's really not going to be that type of establishment. You know, I know what it's like. You hear the word "bar" and people panic. But I've addressed a lot of the neighbors in the area. I've addressed a lot of the, the business owners in the area. And I honestly do not think it's going to be a problem. If anything, during the week, we're going to be open probably till about midnight, if that. I have a three-year-old at home. I don't plan on being an all-night establishment. St. James, down the street, they have a 24-hour. Biggest little city club down the street. We're right in the middle of those two establishments. They have a 24-hour permit. We're only asking till 2:00 o'clock, and this is in very large circumstances. You know, we just don't want to be hamstrung. But like I showed you, our operation's going to be very upscale. Littering. We're going to put multiple trash cans and cigarette butt dispensers around the property, especially on California Avenue, so they don't disrupt your residence, so people aren't hanging out on Humboldt Street. We're going to put them out on California Avenue as well. And Tim, I'm going to put that, I'm going to recommend that bench that's on Cal, that's on Humboldt be placed on California so no one's hanging out, so they do not disrupt your residence. So just letting you know. Possibility of burglaries. The police department recommended tinted windows, but I think that's going to have the opposite effect. We're going to have these kind of chandeliers in the windows. Really nice, bright, it's going to brighten up the area. So people walking by, they're not going to be afraid to walk by this little dark zone that's right in front of the place, so. I've also installed conduit on the California side. And actually, I'll get you guys a map, so you guys know what I'm talking about. And if we can move in on this just a touch. Cool, thanks. This is the California side. This is the Humboldt side. This is Mr. Helion's red, building back here. It's about 800 square feet of space that we are not using going in between his apartment complex and our building. So I honestly don't think the noise of people walking by is going to be that, that, that loud. This, I was going to bring this up earlier. This is mainly per the fire department. This is the emergency egress. This back door opens up to a little alleyway, which there is a floodlight right about there that I replaced, so that's going to have extra lighting if anyone actually happens to go back there, which is going to help out your apartment complex. Yeah, and this is for emergency egress only. And that was a concern on the Reno Police Department. The noise in the area seems to be the big one. And again, I know what it, I know what it's like to open up a bar and have those concerns raised. I have some letters here that I wrote to the residents around the area, or property owners, I should say. If you would like to have those, I can give those to you.
Spin them.
This is from Debbie, from the Wine and Cheese Board, that owns the property across the street. And another recommendation from the police department is I talk, talk and make a good correspondence to the owner, owners of the buildings and the properties in the area. And I think I've done a good job at that. And this is her email that she wrote me today. She said, "Thanks for the letter you gave me, and the increased hours of operation are pretty much going to help out the neighborhood and help brighten up the area, make it more vibrant."
Spin them to Michelle, please. Thank you.
Yeah, I really don't have too much else to say. I don't want to take up too much time, but I think this is pretty straightforward. If we were opening up a sports bar or something really, really loud, I would really, I would, I would understand the concerns. But we are a Nevada bar, our 1864 Tavern. We, we are local Nevadans. We want to take great pride in the achievements of our community. It's the whole reason why we're opening this bar. My business partner and I, we're flight engineers for the Nevada Air Guard. You know, we've served Nevada. We want to open up this bar down there. It is in a mixed-use zone. And I think that restricting businesses from prospering is the last thing you guys need to do. But I get it, I get it. It's butted up to a commercial area, but, or a residential area, but the, the definition of a mixed-use zone is to have commercial and residential work in concert with each other. You're getting a lot of bang for your buck out of me. We, we are a good, local establishment. We're not going to be a rowdy type of bar. And if things go down that route and a lot of the concerns of Mr. Helion are realized, then we have an open-door policy. Come and talk to us, and we'll, we'll take care of it. And as far as the master plan goes, in January of '06, the, the California Avenue District was defined as a vibrant, you know, it was encouraged to have a vibrant neighborhood down there. And I think that that's what we're going to be doing. So I don't have too much else to say. Please, just give me any questions that you have. And I'm more than happy to address any kind of concerns. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Staff? Vern, thank you.
Hello again, Vern Close, Senior Planner. A lot of the issues that would possibly be associated with this particular project, parking, noise, lighting, security, interface with the neighbors, are addressed with conditions that are recommended in the staff report, beginning with condition number five, that they have to post their allowed hours and days of operation. Number six prohibits live or recorded entertainment or dancing on the premises, so it can't turn into a nightclub or a part-time cabaret-type situation. There's the crosswalk condition. There is the lighting condition. There's security camera condition. The trash cans and the cigarette butt receptacles, not dispensers. We don't want to be dispensing cigarette butts. And also, the requirement to provide the additional egress for the fire department. All these things were recommended via code enforcement, either the police department or the fire department, and the applicant has agreed to comply with all of these. Staff believes that these sorts of conditions should ensure that there's minimal impact with this extended hours of operation on the area. They are allowed to operate by ride up to 11:00. That use is allowed. They wouldn't need a special use permit. All they need it for is the extended hours. I did send you a couple of correspondence, one from the attorney's office across the street, and also from the Escobars regarding parking. Those were emailed to you. I also provided copies for you for tonight. That's the only correspondence that we received. No phone calls or other letters, and they did go to the Neighborhood Advisory Board. Staff is recommending approval, subject to conditions in the staff report. Be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to bring it back for disclosures. We'll start with Commissioner Stapleton.
I received some emails.
Thank you. Commissioner Olivas?
Commissioner Olivas, I received some emails.
Commissioner Wieski, as did I.
Commissioner Kaufman?
As did I.
I also received some emails and had a discussion with one of the building owners adjacent to the property. All right, next, we'll move on to public comment. At this time, I'd like to open public comment. We already have several request to speak forums, as well as a couple of letters to read into record. Let's go ahead and start off by reading the two letters into the record. The first one is from Lindsay Schaefer, that would like to have her letter read into the record. And it starts with, "I recently received a notification that, that the 1864 Tavern on 290 California Avenue is requesting a special use permit to allow the bar to operate between the hours of 11:00 p.m. and 2:00 a.m. seven days a week. I implore you to consider the serious consequence this will have for myself and others who reside at 512 Humboldt Street. I choose this apartment due to its proximity to midtown, but mostly because the street has such a residential feel. It's very quiet. I can keep my windows open for fresh air. Friends who come and visit can always find parking, and I can always safely walk around my car and around the neighborhood without any trepidation. As a single female and nurse, the above-mentioned points are so important to me. I work odd hours and need to feel safe when I walk out of my car to my home at all hours. I need to be able to sleep at odd hours when I am not working. I feel strongly that allowing the bar to remain open past 11:00 p.m. will cause great personal distress. There will be noise coming through my windows at hours when I need to be sleeping. People will be loitering on the streets and alleys where I normally feel safe walking alone. Parking near my home will be less available. Having the bar remain open late night will change my peaceful residential street to a downtown street. It will become more polluted with bar trash, cigarettes, noise pollution, people, cars, taxis, and nighttime activity. The peaceful residential space I live in will be no more. Please consider me when you're making your decision. For up to me, I would not allow the bar to remain open past 11:00 p.m. Thank you for your time and consideration. Lindsay Schaefer, resident at 512 Humboldt Street." Want to read the next one?
Commissioner Wieski, reading a letter from, it looks like O-Hesley, resident Joel O-Hesley at 512 Humboldt Street. "My name is Joel, and I'm a current resident of 512 Humboldt Street. I enjoy living in this location, not only for the great location to downtown and midtown Reno, but more so for the peace and quiet of a residential neighborhood without comprising, compromising, excuse me, the proximity. Although I am excited for a new local bar to hang out in, as well as the economic benefits that will come about to California Street and the greater area. However, what I am not excited about is the invasion of privacy. Residing on the bottom floor of 512 Humboldt Street, I fear that the increase of traffic to the bar, I will not be able to freely open my windows and doors. With bars generally brings raucous to and from. I do not look forward to loud people walking, let's see, walking in front of my apartment and walking, and waking me up between the hours of 11:00 and 2:00 a.m. I will also not be able to keep my blinds up during the summer evenings in fear of people peering into my private life. I am also not excited about the prospect of drunken people walking back and forth, potentially peeing and throwing up outside my bedroom window. 1864, I'm sure, will be a great business, but the residents of the area will suffer from the side effects. Thank you."
Next forum we have is from Frank W. Frank is marked "in opposition," does not wish to make a statement, so I read his comment into the record. "We do not need a bar to be on the corner of Humboldt and California or allow to operate 2:00 a.m." Would you like to make a statement? All right, come on. Sorry, yeah.
I want you to counsel me. I've been in this-
Please state your name for the record.
Yes, Frank W.
Thank you.
I've been in this neighborhood for 40 years, in this most quietest area I have ever lived in, and I would not want to see a change. And like the gentleman says, people drinking. I've been in that business. I know what they do. I see-
Can I get you to speak up in the microphone? I have a hard time hearing.
Well, I know the business, of the liquor business. The, on that street, a few, well, a few months ago, there was an incident, and I believe, like the Imperial, not the Imperial, but the, the bar down the street. I guess, like they said, there's no parking there in that area. And it's, I think it'd be a problem. And I haven't heard noise, loud noise, people walking in from the other bars. Or they've been, the, the newspaper racks have been turned upside down, thrown in the streets. And I have noticed in front of 512, the other day, there was a, somebody took the, the cement seat and parked it out in the middle of the sidewalk. So our neighborhood is changing because of the bars, and I would not want to see it, you know, another bar. To me, three bars is a crowd. And, and I just don't, I believe it'd be a problem. And like I said, I've been there for about 40 years, and I would not want to see another problem, you know, problems happen. And it's nice to see a bar is 18th century, but, you know, it's just like he said, the cabs and it could be a problem, you know? And people loud and, you know, and he hasn't talked to everybody, you know? So that's all I have to say. I just want a quiet neighborhood. You know, California Avenue is a very beautiful area, and, and I hope to see it stay that way. That's all I have to say.
Great, thank you very much. On the next one?
This one, it looks like it's David Baker, 20 Penrose, Reno, is in favor, does not wish to make a statement. His comments are as follows. "Consistent with zoning and establishments on California Avenue of same use." on California Avenue of same use."
The next one we have is from Krista Phillips, is marked in favor, does not wish to make a statement. Did not leave any comments to put in the record.
Janine Plunkett of 10155 Cascade Falls Drive, does not wish to make a statement, is in favor of this bar will enhance the area and grow our community.
Next one we have is Kevin Wallen. I'm having a hard time with the last name. Is marked, does not wish to make a statement, but is in favor, with no comments to read in the record.
Greg Warren of 611 Humboldt Street, is in opposition, does not wish to make a statement, has written, "I don't oppose the bar itself, only the extended hours. It is on the edge of the residential neighborhood. Please don't allow the extended hours." Next one is Kay Warren, 611 Humboldt Street, is in opposition, does not wish to make a statement. "I am opposed to the business hours being extended to 2:00 a.m. As, excuse me, this is a mostly residential neighborhood, and we live only one block away. The nighttime noise and parking will be affected negatively, not to mention litter issues. Property values may also be affected negatively."
Next, we have Jim Weber, who is in opposition and wishes to make a statement.
(inaudible)
Okay, I'll go ahead and read his comments in. "I support the closing of the tavern at 11:00 p.m. on weeknights." Next, we have Tim Helian, in opposition, wishes to make a statement.
Mr. Chair members of the commission, I'm Tim Helian. I'm with my wife, own the building 19 feet to the south of the bar, the building the bar's in, 512 Humboldt. And as far as I know, this is not about the bar being there or not. That's a done deal. With the zoning and the land use issues, it's going to be there. The issue right now is whether or not they can stay open after 11:00. Is that correct? That's what I read. Okay, good. Well, look, none of you want people talking outside your bedroom window at 11:00 o'clock, let alone 2:00 a.m. None of you want people flicking cigarettes in your front yards, or peeing in your bushes. None of, Sean doesn't want that. What is a bar and business to do? Make money. How do you make money in a bar? You sell booze. How do you make more money? By selling more booze. What do people do when they drink more booze? They make more noise. If they stay open after 11:00, they're drinking more booze. When people go outside to leave, they'll pass the bedroom windows in our building to get to some of these proposed parking areas. When people leave a business that you can't smoke in, they'll light up, walk away from the ashtray that's placed there for them to use, and smoke and flick their ashes somewhere. People that smoke don't look for ashtrays anyway. I had Duganay across the street for 21 years. I had to pay someone to clean up our parking lot every single morning we were open. 21 years. If I didn't, Debbie Bramby, who owns the cheese board, would call me and say, "Look, we got a problem." And apparently, so we've been closed six years. I guess she's forgotten that. But that was a big deal. And we weren't a bar. We were a restaurant. Over the 21 years I was there, we, for a number of years, were open 24 hours. Then, for a few years, we were open until 2:00 a.m. Then, we were open 11:00 a.m., or 11:00 p.m. We stayed open until 2:00 p.m. on the weekends. I can tell you, from many years of experience, people that stay out after 11:00 are a different breed of cat than people that don't stay out after 11:00. Also had a lot, you know, at Duganay, we had the best intentions. We wanted to have a nice place that families would go to, and we did. The mayor used to go there. People, the whole town went there. But we wanted it to be a great place. The noise inside, on occasion, we'd have live music 20 times in 21 years. Kept the doors closed while it was going on. You can't control people when they're walking out. If you've had a couple of beers with a friend, and you walk outside, you walk through a neighborhood, you're having a conversation at this level. This level in a neighborhood that's dead quiet at night is noticeable. I'm about, I mean, from me to you, Mr. Chair, is twice the distance of the sidewalk to one of our bedroom windows, that someone will walk by to get to an intended parking lot. You know, I've had an address on this exact block since 1985. I can tell you, this is absolutely a non-compatible mixed land use issue. Again, non-compatible. I, as everybody, wants commerce in the neighborhood. This commerce has also got to support residential, is the other half-
Thirty more seconds, please.
I'm sorry.
Thirty more seconds?
Okay, great. Calavas Quiet Street, the building past Calavas is a ghost town. This has to be considered. This is historic, quiet neighborhood that will be greatly affected by the bar, period, let alone one that stays open after 11:00 p.m. Thank you for reconsidering this proposed negative impact to our neighborhood.
Great. Thank you very much. Rose Helian is the next request to speak forum.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me? Okay. My name is Rose Helian, and I own the building at 512 Humboldt. It is directly south of the proposed bar, and I oppose the 2:00 a.m. closing time, and I'm going to tell you why. My husband and I have invested in the old Southwest because we believe it is important to preserve the history of our great city and the integrity of one of Nevada's oldest neighborhoods. We purchased our beautiful building and have worked tirelessly and with great expense to restore it to its original 1939 condition. We are committed to seeing that some things that are precious and irreplaceable are respectfully maintained. I support mixed land use, but strongly contend that this is an incompatibility issue. A bar does not belong next to a home. You wouldn't want a bar next to your homes, I'm sure. 512 is currently home to a UNR professor, two nurses, and two Patagonia employees. These people both deserve and pay for a nice place to live. They chose to live in a charming building in an established neighborhood. Some people may choose to live next to a bar, but our residents did not choose to live next to a bar. I'd also like to address the impact on our property value. A bar goes in, and the value goes down. Who is going to compensate us for the decrease in our property value? Who is going to pay for the additional maintenance and cleanup? Our rents are based on livability. Who will pay for the loss of rental income when our tenants move out because of the inhospitable environment? And if we have to lower our rents, who is going to subsidize the difference? We aren't some kind of land barons. We are working people who believe in this city. Our financial sustainability and security is at stake. Sean has talked about restricting businesses. What about our investment being restricted and limited? With all due respect to Sean, the plan laid out by the bar owner sounds like a utopia fairyland. Their patrons are going to be nice, upstanding citizens. They're going to use the trash cans and cigarette bins. They're going to whisper as they stumble to their cars in parking lots that are across down the street from our building. But let's throw a little reality into the mix here. Late-night partiers are not on their best behavior. They are loud, they park where it's convenient, and they are generally inconsiderate with their garbage. Ride your bike down Cal Avenue after a beer crawl, and you'll run into broken bottles, cigarette butts, and litter on the streets and on the sidewalk every time. I ride my bike in the morning. I see it consistently. This bar will negatively and substantially impact the integrity of the neighborhood, the quality of life for our tenants, and our hard-earned investment. Please don't trash what is left of historic Reno. I urge you to forego short-sighted approvals and act in the long-term interest of our neighborhood and our city. Think in the long term. How many bars can one street hold before it turns into Potter'sville? And I think you guys know what I'm talking about from It's a Wonderful Life. Thank you for your service to our community.
Thank you very much.
(laughing)
Does anybody else request to speak on this item? If not, I will close public comment. Bring it back to the commission for questions. Who would like to start? Commissioner Wieske.
Mr. Chairman, Vern. Just for clarification purposes, a special use permit that is before us tonight, is it for the establishment of a bar or a drinking facility, or is it just for extended hours from 11:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. seven days a week?
For enclosed senior planners, to extend the operational hours from 11:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m.
So, the bar is already an accepted use without a special use permit or any hearings whatsoever?
Between 6:00 a.m. and 11:00 p.m., that's correct.
Thank you. Was there any discussion with the applicant regarding limiting the hours of 11:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. to weekends only, or was it only proposed as seven days a week?
We had discussion on that. Their original request was to go to 2:00 a.m., and I said, "Would you consider going to 11:00 or midnight, like Sunday through Thursday, and then doing the extended hours on Fridays and Saturdays?" And he considered that, and then changed his mind back to 2:00 a.m. seven days a week.
Okay. What other drinking establishments on California Avenue between Arlington and Plumas Street? We've heard City and then St. James.
The biggest little city clubs at the corner are Plumas and California, about two blocks to the east.
Okay.
The St. James is about two blocks to the west on the, I believe it's on the north side of California.
Okay.
And then there is a brew pub type establishment. I think it's in the old Chocolate Factory area, just on the north side of Arlington. I believe that's where that is.
Okay.
And I, and St. James, I for sure know they're allowed to operate 24 hours because they got a special use permit to do that.
Are they residential adjacency, or is there building between them?
The biggest little, the biggest little city club on Plumas in California, I don't believe there's any residential adjacency on, there's a right on the corner there, and there's a building-
Right.
Yeah, and St. James, I don't believe so, but I'm not positive.
Okay. And then, the brew pub that's the new establishment, is there residential adjacency to that, do you know?
Let me look at my map. That's not going to show on there. There could be to the north, northwest. I just-
Okay.
I'm not positive.
Okay. All right, thank you. Now, I have no further questions this time. Commissioner Stapleton?
You have a question for staff. Vern, the, this entitlement to have the, if we approved the SUP for the additional hours of operation, is this something that, and forgive me for not knowing this and being a planning commissioner, is this something that then carries with the property if the use is maintained, or is it something that if it changed hands and became a different type of, a bar with a different owner?
The special use permit, as long as they operated as a bar, let's say they operated as a bar, and then the bar use goes away, and a bookstore goes in there, and then they want to put a bar in there again, they could put a bar in there that could operate from 6:00 to 11:00, but to extend the operational hours, they would have to get a special use permit because the use was discontinued and something else was put in there in the meantime. So theoretically, I mean, if it maintains its use as a bar continuously, and they sell it to you or me, I could operate it under whatever restrictions of operational hours are approved.
Okay. And I have another question, I have a question for, is it Lieutenant Rula who worked on this, the suggestion from RPD?
Neglected to say Lieutenant Rula was here to ask any questions you might have for the police.
Can you, thanks, Lieutenant, can you go over your, what your issues were initially with this property, and then I think all, whether they've been addressed here in the conditions, or whether you guys are satisfied?
Yeah, for the record, excuse me, Lieutenant Bill Rula with the Marine Police Department. I'm in charge of our crime prevention through environmental design project assignments, and I gave this one to one of our officers to do the review. He works graveyard hours, so this would be his time of night, operating until 2:00 in the morning to see what kind of different issues he would have at that late hour. His review, excuse me, of the area, again, we talked about the crosswalk, goes right across from the cheese board to this location. His concerns were obviously the parking issues that you're going to see in the area, which we see throughout California Avenue as being a problem, because parking's an issue. Late at night, whether or not patrons are going to use that location at the cheese board to come across the street and visit this establishment was a concern. One for the owner of the cheese board, that, because what ends up happening most times is, once people are done drinking and going to their cars, they leave debris, garbage, could be some damaged vehicles in the parking lot. So, one of the concerns to be addressed was having the applicant have that discussion with the owners of the cheese board, either allowing or not allowing parking in that location. The crosswalk was, again, at 2:00 in the morning. There's not much lighting in that area. Again, I don't think we expect the applicant to put out street lighting for the crosswalk. That is a city's function. But the recommendation was to maybe some increase, some lighting outside their business towards the sidewalk to help light up that crosswalk if people are going to utilize it. The noise concern's obviously an issue. As Officer Garlock notes in his memorandum, if you look at the front of the business, there is no, it's the sidewalk straight to the business. There's no patio, open patio, no place really for patrons to sit and be outside if they leave the business. Traditionally, what we see in some of these businesses that are right off the sidewalk, they don't have access, is if they do become a bar, or I don't know if there's a cabaret under this license or not, you see people lining up, waiting to get in, blocks of sidewalks, which does create noise throughout. If you can go out for a smoke break outside the business, you're going to be right outside there, causing that noise to happen on California Street at 2:00 in the morning. Again, it's noted about talking with the neighbors, again, not just the business owners, but also the residents, was a request that you hit all the businesses, people around them, to see who's going to impact. We've talked in other committees about, like a good neighbor agreement with new businesses coming in. I believe the applicant made some attempt to do that. Hearing tonight, obviously, there's some residents that may not have been consulted, especially the adjacent businesses. Littering, again, a lot of garbage. If, and I think someone mentioned, people use them, sometimes they don't. All we can ask of the applicant or business owner is to make the attempt to have receptacles, things like that, outside or just inside the business, to get rid of garbage before they come outside. Again, it's up to the individual whether or not they're going to use them, but it's a request to try to maintain or minimize the number of litter that happens outside the street. The burglaries, this was more from, again, a street officer level, look at the location. Big pane windows, usually either, if you do get drunk and people walk down the street, or someone wants to commit a crime, they may go through the window. Recently, if you've watched the news, we've had a lot of rash of window smash burglaries. That's our concern. I believe that was Officer Garlock's concern here, too, is the type of window that's there, large pane window. Again, I didn't do the analysis. I don't know what type of window it is, but maybe help do some crime prevention by changing the type of window you're using. Again, we talked about parking as an issue. You know, I guess my concern is, and again, we want to maintain good businesses. I don't disagree with the applicant of bringing good businesses in. They've got to, they've got to work alongside the other people that are in the neighborhood. In comparison to some of the other bars, I believe St. James, I think it was a question, Commissioner Wieske, I apologize. If there was a residence next to St. James, looking at the Google Maps, there is, right next to it, there is, looks like a residence. I know there's some houses that are businesses. That one looks like it's actual resident. Next to that is an acupuncture place, and I believe on the corner of California and Arlington is an apartment complex. I believe, if that's what that is. So, and that operates 24 hours a day. Looking at the calls for service in that area, just for that geographical beat area, not specifically that business or that street, we didn't see a huge increase in numbers of calls for service. Have not, have not, over the last three years. Specifically looking at fights, assaults, things like that, weren't very large numbers in the last three years. So, the question you pose is, are we in favor of it? I think based on the circumstances in the neighborhood with the other bars that are next to residential areas, I wouldn't be opposed to it. I do believe there are concerns I brought up tonight by some neighbors that maybe the applicant didn't reach out as far as he probably could have to make those contacts with the residents versus the business owners.
Can I follow up? In terms of the specific concerns you had with lighting, did, actually, I'm sorry, I guess this is a question for staff. I apologize.
Okay.
Was, is the lighting something that is addressed in the, in the conditions? I don't see, it was a concern of RPD, the lighting against the building?
Uh, condition number eight.
Oh, I see it. I apologize. I see it. I didn't have that- Oh, I see it, I apologize, I see it, I didn't have that one highlighted.
And, and again, those were based on the applicant's willingness and also comments made from the police staff, the officer that reviewed it, in conjunction with that, he recognized that that would be a good thing to do, would be to add, adding lighting to both sides, to the Humboldt and the California side.
Okay, thank you, and I'm sorry, I have one more question, or, go ahead.
Can I, can I follow up on that, Commissioner Stapleton? Vern, the, the lighting that's proposed or, or being installed, does that meet our dark skies requirement? Because I, the one thing I see that stood out to me was a large floodlight on the south side of the building, which faces the apartments, and as being a condition to this, I'm concerned that that floodlight throws light out onto the adjacent property.
Well, the lights should be shielded so that they're, you know, pointing down, and they could use a lesser intense or...
Okay, but, that's one of our goals as a planning commission, is to have dark sky lighting, and it's not specific that it's dark sky lighting, it's additional building lighting.
Well, well, again, lighting that's put in adjacent, well, this isn't residential zone property, but it's residentially used, has to be shielded and directed downward, and we could add that to the condition, just to clarify it, and I, I don't have the code with me on the dark sky portion of it, but, you know, we could add something to that condition to make that clear, if that's what you would prefer.
Thank you.
Commissioner Stapleton, do you have another question?
I did, I had one more question for Lieutenant Rula. Thanks. So you said that you weren't necessarily opposed to it, do you feel like through these conditions that you're, because you, what you went through were a whole lot of concerns, to me, that's, and we don't usually hear that on projects that come before us, that was a lot of concerns, we usually don't get that from our PD, but, do you feel like these concerns were addressed with these, I don't know if you've seen the staff report and the conditions five through 10, I think, five through 12, address, oh yeah, five through 11, I don't know if you can comment on that?
Again, for the record, Lieutenant Bill Rula, Reno Police Department, I have not seen the staff report. I believe, based on, on information I got from Vern after our submission of our report and the attempts by the, the applicant, based on what I heard, I didn't have concerns in the sense that I think most of the stuff we looked at was, was addressed. Coming to the meeting tonight, though, I have concerns from, again, reaching out further than where he reached to the business owners. As, as Officer Garlock notes in his memorandum as well, he notes residential areas south of, right south of the business, right adjacent to the business, residential in, in, right off of Humboldt, and that parking could be an issue on those streets as well, so it's, I guess part of me says, parking is always an issue in that area, so whether, regardless of what business you have there, residents are going to have, residents and business owners are going to have to kind of mitigate that, that issue. I think tonight, again, just going back, going back to your question, I believe he made an attempt. I think, listening to the, the statements and public comment, I think there are some concerns that I think the owners should address with the rest of the neighborhood as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wiskey.
Lieutenant, one quick question for you, and with all due respect, I don't mean this in a derogatory manner, but wouldn't it be best for our bars if we had no parking whatsoever for the cars, so that people either had to walk or get a taxi?
I wouldn't disagree with that, you would hope people would have a designated driver when they went to these locations. The take I have on the California area, though, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, is, is, I've, I've seen a couple more businesses, not bars, but restaurants and other requests come through, my office at least, and we talk about parking, again, becomes a larger issue for all those businesses down there, and that really, that we want people coming in, transit, transit in, whether, not so much their own cars, but coming in on foot, walking the neighborhood. You do have the concerns that the neighbors addressed tonight of people coming in the neighborhood, we do the, the bar hops, the crawls, if you want to call them, the downtown core, in this area as well. You're going to have a lot of pedestrian traffic, which we already have in that neighborhood because of the bars. Parking's always an issue. I think this, this, this development in California is just to draw people in, usually by foot, and, and again, you've got not only the one on Plumas and Sierra, you'll have this one, you'll have St. James, and then Strega Bar, I mean, right, all in that same area, you have, again, a bunch of, a bunch of bars where people are going to bar hop. So parking may not be a large issue if they're walking from bar to bar. I hope, hope that answered your question.
It does, thank you.
Thanks.
Commissioner Kaufman?
This is for the applicant. Sean, what's your...
Yes, sir, Sean Plunkett, hi.
...occupancy limit?
Dave, exact number?
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine, eighty-nine?
Eighty-nine people, okay. Thank you.
Sure.
I have a quick question for you while you're up here. There was a question asked earlier, if you were approached about hours of operation through Friday, or I should say Friday and Saturday, were you approached and what was your response?
Yeah, and I've talked to Vern a couple times about this, and to be honest, the 2:00 AM, I, I totally agree with Tim and his, Rose. You do get a different type of crowd in the late night. The only reason I asked for the 2:00 AM is because, well, for instance, next year is our 150-year anniversary for Nevada Day. I didn't want to restrict it toward the weekends, and that's why I just broadly said, okay, 11 to 2, seven days a week, that's fine. I am not opposed to having limited hours during the week, I am not opposed to that at all. Logistically, with labor, and, you know, I, I love the neighborhood down there, that's the main reason why we're down there, and we're not there, which it's, I painted it as a utopia and you painted it as a war zone, I think that it's going to be somewhere in the middle there. I'm, I'm not so blind to see what bars do, and that's why I do not care being open 24 hours, we want to have that respectable establishment, that during the week, I would not mind staying open until midnight, I mean, that's fine with me. On the weekends, you know, this was my entire plan, 1:00, call last call, get people out of there, and then, I don't know, Vern, what is the, does it say you stop, have to stop serving alcohol at 2:00, or just close the doors at 2:00? Okay. So if we, we can call last call at 1:00, the doors are shut, locked up at 2:00 on the weekends, I'm totally fine with that. I don't need to be open until 2:00 on Wednesday, Wednesday night. But again, I didn't want to hamstring our business, we put a lot of investment in this too, and when we first talked to the planning...
You know, you've answered my question, thank you very much.
Sure, okay.
Does anybody else have a question? That's good, thank you.
Okay, sorry, I, I know that there's a parking question, I do have some comments on parking, if that's okay, no?
Is somebody asking? No? No, thank you very much. Do you have any other questions for staff? Okay, we'll bring them back to the board for discussion. All right, I guess I'll start it off. I do have a concern in this area, I, I think this is a, seems like a good business, operating until 2:00 AM, seven days a week, I do have concerns about. I would like to hear your guys' responses to that, but I think that, you know, we do have to take consideration that there is residential adjacency, and especially through, you know, weekdays. I wouldn't be opposed to, to limiting those hours below 2:00 AM.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not in agreement with the extended hours seven days a week. I could quite possibly make the findings for Friday night and Saturday night only, and all other nights during the week, 11:00 PM is a respectable closing time, since their adjacency is to an apartment building behind them. And that's, that's my consideration at this time, that Friday night and Saturday night, I think, would be good for the business and, and reasonable for the neighborhood.
Commissioner Stapleton, I, I mean, there's, there's two sides to this, there's the fact that this isn't allowed use basically in this neighborhood, and it has been for some time, I think it, it was changed to that in, when this was put as part of the downtown plan, I think, and I'm sure that the Helions were involved in that discussion, that, you know, changed that, you know, but the, the reality of the situation is, this is basically an allowed use in this area. The extended hours, you know, on the other time, on the other side of that, it's our responsibility to, you know, part of the reason we have this, you know, oversight is to ensure that, you know, in the issue of residential, residential adjacency, you know, we, we have to meet finding A, which is that this is compatible, you know, with, is it finding A, with surrounding uses? Yeah. And I think that, I agree that I think that on a weeknight, that's too much, but on a weekend, I think that's, I think that's a good compromise, and I do think that limiting that to just on Friday and Saturday nights to 2:00 AM, I think that's sort of within the realm of what is appropriate there, and I also think that with the, the extensive conditions that were put on this, I, I do think that the residents surrounding there on those properties are going to have protection, and it sounds like if things do get out of hand, you know, they, there, you know, there are recourses that they have through the city and, you know, hopefully through the, the property owner as well, so I am comfortable with that.
Commissioner Levis?
No. Was I on all this time? I think that's reasonable too, that's during the week and, but the weekends, I, the limits on the hours, I'm comfortable with that too. No real other, I mean, we addressed most other concerns.
Commissioner Wiskey?
If I can just, Mr. Chairman, add something, according to the document that we've received in our packet, not just this block, but the block to the east of this, of this proposed establishment's extended hours, because the establishment's already approved and, and can, can open business without a special use permit, it's all MU, it's all mixed use, so you are going to have a combination of different businesses. It's no different than if we look at MU zoning downtown, or in Midtown, or South Meadows, that's, that's adjacency, that's mixed use, that's what this is supposed to be. I think, you know, with this being said, the way that it is, if it was across the street where we've still got MF30 or, or south of it, where there is not necessarily as much MU, we might want to look at it differently, but that's what MU's all about, I, Commissioner Stapleton kind of hit it right on the head.
Commissioner Kaufman?
And I agree, I, I would limit Sunday through Thursday at the normal operating hours at 11:00 and extend them, this SUP being only for Friday and Saturday night, extended hours. And I can support that, and I can make all those findings.
Sorry, sir, I see you have your hand up, but we're in board discussion right now, we're no longer taking questions. I, like I started off with, I completely agree, during, during the weekdays, I, I feel that 2:00 PM, or 2:00 AM is too late, and so if someone liked to, if we're done with discussion, and someone would like to propose a motion with that amendment?
Commissioner Wiskey?
Mr. Chairman, in the case of LDC 13-00047, 1864 Tavern, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permit subject to conditions, and I'm going to change condition number five, where the request is 6:00 AM through 2:00 AM, seven days a week, to 6:00 AM through 2:00 AM, Fridays and Saturdays only. Also, condition number eight, all outside lighting is to meet dark skies ordinances. And I can make the findings.
Thank you, Commissioner Wiskey, do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion, and I can make the findings also.
Great, I have a first and a second, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, signify by saying nay. Let the record show, the motion passes 5 to 0. Any action taken by the planning commission on a tentative map, special use permit variance, or Skyway is final unless appealed. Any persons agreed by the decision may file an appeal. Each person or entity must make his or her its own appeal. Appeals must be filed with the city clerk within 10 days of the planning commission hearing by submitting the appropriate form and fee. All other matters will be forwarded to the city council with the planning commission Thank you, good luck with your project. Moving on to item number 10, initiation of text amendment regarding definition of medical offices. Nathan?
Good evening, Commissioners, Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. Staff is requesting that the planning commission initiate a text amendment that would allow us to further analyze and expand the, the definition of a day-use medical facility. What we experience right now is, we receive many business license applications that, that the, the definition as we have it now isn't as clear as it could be, that, you know, medical offices, you know, do, do we qualify that for like psychologist's office or medical billing? What we'd like is some, the opportunity to further analyze the definition as we have it now and, and where medical offices might be located. With, with that, I can answer any questions that you might have, but what we're, all we're asking is that the commission initiate us so that we can work on it and present something for your review in the future.
Any questions?
Commissioner Stapleton?
Yeah, I would make that motion, but I have one question. I thought that initiations on, you know, land use changes had to come from city council, only asking that because I've been told that in the past, or is this just because it's a text amendment, the planning commission can initiate?
Nathan Gilbert, that the planning commission can initiate text amendments, it's ultimately the council's decision, but the planning commission has the authority to initiate a text amendment.
But only a text amendment?
Only a text amendment.
Okay, thank you. So moved to initiate a text amendment on the definition of medical facilities?
Yes.
Second.
All right, I guess there's no need for a vote?
I saw, so moved.
Anyways, like call for a vote, all those member, saying by, by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, saying nay. Let the record show, the motion passed 5 to 0. Moving on to item number 11, Trucking Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report. Commissioner Wiskey?
Mr. Chairman, no update. You know, I do have a point of discussion that we're going to have to address shortly in that if Commissioner, if Chairman Romeo is stepping down, Chairman Romeo is also chairman of the Reno Planning, or Regional Planning Commission, and we will have to find an alternate for him so that we have our three representatives on Regional Planning Commission.
Great, thank you.
Marilyn Craig, Deputy City Attorney. Staff will, will put items on your agenda for this next meeting so that you can address those questions.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item number 12, staff announcements. First is report on status of planning division projects.
How about we lump them all together?
Go ahead.
And I have no announcements. How's that?
All right. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number 13, Commissioner's suggestions for future agenda items. Seeing none, move on to public comment. This public comment item is to allow the public to... to provide general public comment and not for comment on individual action items on this agenda. Would anybody like to speak? Close public comment. Next is adjournment, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you very much, have a good night.